Correspondence tonight? Yes, Patty.
Yes, I do.
Patty, if I could just interrupt for one second. We have a little bit different setup tonight. And so I think particularly the people on this side, if you want to sit back just a little bit and look toward the camera, it might be better for the people who are watching at home.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hope you can see me. I was gonna say, as we know as the council, one of our communication and our reach goals this year was to continue to gather citizen input and to encourage a dialogue between council and our community members. And Councilor Lennon and Garvin and I, with the assistance of Deb Lane, have organized two events this year. The first of which is going to happen on Wednesday from 8:00. It'll be from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. It'll take place at the library in the new conference room. And this first event is going to be a little bit different than the event that was in September in that we are gonna have kind of informal setting, some refreshments, of course, but really looking for citizens to come with, ask questions, talk about what's hot on their mind, and to really give us some feedback on the work we're doing. So we're hoping for a well-attended event and a successful event. And I hope that people come in droves and let us know what they think. One other.
Go for it.
My second one was that, just want to let the council know that the Alternative Energy Committee is up and running. I think we just had this last Tuesday our third meeting. And the group is awesome. They're literally, the energy from the group, the expertise and the knowledge each of the person brings is super. There's some great synergy going on. And we're still in the researching phase. So there's no recommendations as of yet. But I'm really hopeful that we're gonna have a super outcome with this committee. And I'll keep you posted. The next meeting, though, is on, to let you guys know, is Tuesday, June 14th. So anybody who's interested, come on in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, any other council members who would like to report? No? Next up on our agenda is citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak tonight to anything not on the agenda? No, I don't see that there is anyone. So we'll move on to the next item. We do have Councilor Garvin with us now. And I just wanted to mention, I think that Councilor Jordan may be coming a little bit later. But I'm not sure that she'll make it tonight because she has a conflict with a family obligation. So we will move on at this point to item number 60 through 65. These are items that were tabled from our May 9 meeting. I'm going to ask the Finance Chair, Kathy Ray, if she would introduce the first item, number 60.
Do we have to take that item off the table? Okay, so I move that we take the item, was it 60, 65?
60 through 65.
Yes, off the table from the May 9.
Do I need a motion for you?
Yes, I just made it.
For that from you? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Patty. Discussion? No? All in favor of that? Great. Thank you for that correction on Robert's rules.
Okay.
We'll move on to item number 60.
All right. So item number 60 is the municipal budget. So I move that the town, the Capes of Town Council, having held a public hearing on Monday, May 9, 2016, does hereby adopt the municipal budget of $11,932,161.10 for fiscal year 2017. I would say that the gross appropriations would be handled by the town manager because I'm not going to expect to do that. And I will say that that is a 1% reduction in the proposed budget.
So you're moving for a 1% reduction of the total that was presented in our packets and that we discussed at the public hearing on May 9?
Correct.
Great. Is there a second on that? I'll second. Thank you. Discussion?
Can you just repeat what the number was again?
Sure. It's at the 1% reduction from the proposed budget is a reduction of $120,526.88.
Yes. Mike, can you tell us what you cut to get that?
You know, I wouldn't cut anything. It'd be up to the town council to make the cuts.
Well, I mean, how did you adjust this to be 1% less?
No, he didn't, I did.
Oh. How did you adjust this to be 1% less?
Because I've asked the, I asked, when we had our meeting on May 9, I asked the school department to cut 1%. And I'm also asking for fairness to the town. I'm asking the town to cut 1% as well.
So the budget you're asking us to vote on to...
The motion I made is for a budget that's 1% less than what is proposed.
Oh. Well, how are we supposed to know what's in the budget? What's in your proposed budget?
As I said, the town manager would, I would suggest that the town manager would allocate 1% reduction in the numbers that he has proposed in his budget. Or however he, I mean, he may say, I'm not gonna, you know, propose 1% less in administration, but I am in animal control. I'm just throwing those numbers out. I suggest that it would be up to him, as it was up to him, that, how he proposed it to begin with.
Kathy, could I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Is there a particular rationale for 1%? Does it, in your mind, does that correlate to a particular number in people's tax bills or in the tax rate? Or is it the budget itself that you're concerned about and that you have a particular issue with?
It's the budget itself. And I thought when I got to the school part, I would explain more about my concerns, specifically about the school budget. So, in other words, I'm asking the municipal side to take the same cut as I'm asking the school side.
Yes, Sarah. Sorry, did you want to go first instead? Marisha, go ahead.
I just, I can't vote on a budget that we haven't discussed, reviewed, looked at, heard from the citizens on at enormous length. So I'm sort of surprised. Like, I'm completely unready to vote on this, let alone have a discussion because I don't even have anything in front of me what we're, what the budget is.
Jessica?
Well, a 1% reduction, which Councilor Ray discussed at the workshop, would amount to a $120,526 decrease in municipal budget. I mean, if we pass this decrease, the town manager would likely propose some budget adjustments, you know, in what he's already proposed to cut that amount. I support that because I went back and did, you know, I went back to 2004 and looked at everything. This is, this municipal budget is currently 3.8%. A 1% drop would put it at 2.8%, which I think is reasonable, responsible, and prudent. Since 2000, well, let me put it this way. In 2004, the municipal budget was 4.2 million. And now it's 12,552,688. At the workshop, I handed out everyone a social security cost of living rate history. And since 2004, where's my note here? Security, social security cost of living increases have averaged only 1.82%. In the years 2009, 2010, 2015, and this year, 2016, there was no increase for people on social security, Cape Elizabeth as an aging population. And I think that we need to try to slow this train of increases. And I think 1% is reasonable. I don't think it's going to be in any way catastrophic for the municipal budget to do that.
Patty?
I guess my feeling on this is this, that, you know, Mike and his department heads put a lot of time and thought into bringing forth a budget that is an effective and efficient use of the monies that it takes to make this town chug along. While I can really appreciate what you're saying, both Kathy and you, Jessica, I feel like what's brought forth is what it needs. And I really think that they, they worked really hard to make it as lean as possible. And to be fair, what they, what it needs to do to make this town run. So with that, I would not be supporting the 1%. I feel like what, there's been a lot of work done. And I feel like it's a little arbitrary just to say a cutting 1%. And that's kind of where I press it with it, with all the, you know, due respect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Sarah.
I mean, I guess I agree with Patty. But my bigger issue is that the timing is, seems completely way too late. I mean, if you wanted 1% cut, I feel like that conversation needed to start months ago with, as Patty said, before the department heads even submitted their budgets and so forth. Or at the very least, after we got, looked at the very first issue of the budget and said, ah, no, you know, this is too high, we need 1%. But we're so far down the line now that it just seems... I don't even, I'm at a loss for words. It seems, it seems impulsive and somewhat irresponsible. I mean, we've been through the whole process. We're here just to vote on what we've discussed at enormous length, not only us, but the, but the citizens and everyone else. So I won't be supporting that.
Kathy? Could I just address that? I brought this up at the May 9, at our May 9 workshop. So I don't feel that it's impulsive. I think I was pretty clear then that I was looking for 1% reduction in both budgets. And I said I would continue to look for that. And I am following through with that this evening. So I just want to just address that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yep, me too. After we had the school budget workshop, you know, which is our, which was our, you know, first opportunity to review that with the school board, when I went back and looked at other figures, I also would point out, and I think I just neglected to do that a minute ago, that since 2004, the property taxes increases on the median price home, Cape Elizabeth, a $300,000 home, have increased by 18.9%. So what I'm saying is, when you look at 3.8% for the town, 3.2% for the school board, school department, you look at the overall picture of how much our taxes are going up year after year after year. In aggregate, looking at everything we've been discussing in all this time, I'm saying we need to slow this down a little bit. And I think that 2.8 and 2.2 are very reasonable. And when you've got a budget of 12 million, I think it's reasonable to just think that there could be a little more efficiency found. And so, I don't think it's arbitrary. I think it's prudent.
Anyone else? No? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Chair McCoslin. I do think that the budget represents the priorities of the town council. I think if you look back at the original March budget message that I prepared at the beginning of the budget, it explains that, you know, the, if you look at personnel, for instance, one of the reasons for an increase is we have more, we've taken community services and we're funding, instead of a halftime professional to work on senior issues, we're funding a full-time person, very much a priority of the council. The next largest item going up in the budget relates to the debt service account for principal and interest. And the number one item in that is the principal expense for the recycling center. That includes, it's $140,000 for that principal for that and the pool humidity system. And, you know, I think, you know, the alternative is, you know, not, not supporting the referendum in June, which I think is, I think the citizens should support it. And, you know, we could put a stop to the improvements to the pool. And that would probably result in closing the pool. I think those are very valuable services. You know, it's, we can always look at things. We can always look at cuts. But, you know, it's just very difficult to be looking at reductions on May 19 when, you know, I think the council's been pretty clear on its priorities since the beginning of the year. The other thing is, you know, you would, and I'm not sure of the numbers exactly with the percentages. But you said the municipal budget at one year was blank, and this year it's blank. Well, is that including, like, the community services transfer 1.7 million into it?
Well, yeah, since 2004. But we didn't, we had it.
Did you do apples to apples both times?
No.
Yeah. I think you gotta do apples to apples both times.
It's overall, yeah.
And without that, you know, I get concerned with those numbers being presented in a way that I'm comparing apples to apples. And if you look at the 18.9%, you know, I think I calculated that for you when you asked me to. And you look at, what was the average per year that I gave you on that?
1.8.
1.5, I think?
Oh, 1.5, no.
It was an average of 1.5%. And that's without, you know, it's actually a little bit of that because the 18.9 is, you know, the accumulated effect. So, you know, so that, you know, the actual increase has been closer to, and I'm talking town, school, community service, county combined. I'm talking about the tax, the actual taxes paid on someone on a $300,000 home. That actually, since 2004, has increased an average of 1.4 or 1.5%. So, you know, I think it's all how the numbers are presented. And I, you know, my sense is, yeah, you know, 18.9% sounds like a lot. But I think when you look at it on an annualized basis of 1.5% and, you know, recognizing the community has expectations for a good school system and for, you know, you know, all the different municipal services, I'd seen programs for seniors. You know, I think when most citizens really look at the numbers, you know, I go back to the public hearing, no one spoke. So, you know, I think that the school board, the municipal government, the councils have generally been fairly responsible.
Thank you. Yes, Jamie?
I support the idea of making sure that we are running our budgets as efficiently as possible and putting the least burden that we can on the taxpayers of the town. This having been my first time going through this process, I, what I don't agree with in this case is the idea of just saying 1% across the board and then putting it on Mike for his discretion for how to make those appropriations. Having gone through this, it seems like we're given enough opportunity and enough detail to see where we think there may or may not be wasteful spending happening. And from my view of things, I agree that, number one, it's a, it's a pretty lean budget to begin with. And number two, that it reflects, as Mike just said, the priorities of the town. I think what, what we should look at if, if we're to be thinking that reductions are required or desired for many of us, is to really look and scrutinize the detail without micromanaging each of these accounts and department areas, for sure. But, you know, looking at, well, what is the thing that sticks out as perhaps being the wasteful thing? $125,000 or thereabouts is not that big of a number. And overall, 1% reduction. But I just think that the nature of how we're approaching this... Arbitrary is not the word. Kathy, I don't mean to diminish what you're trying to achieve by saying arbitrary. But I feel like we could be more directed in, in the cost savings measures, if that's what we're truly trying to get to, as opposed to just saying 1%. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. I will just say, I agree with that. I think if we had seen items in the agenda as we went along that we thought were overpriced or overbudgeted, then we had plenty of opportunity to look at that and comment on that along the way. I don't remember in any of our discussions, and I don't remember in looking through the entire budget myself, line item by line, line item, seeing anything in there that stood out as an item that could be cut by 1% or any other percentage. And we did spend a great deal of time, I think, going through those numbers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we vote on the motion on the floor? No? All in favor of Kathy's motion, which was, I'm going to ask Deb if she'd read it back to us?
It is to reduce the municipal budget as proposed by $125,526.88.
All in favor of that motion? Thank you. Opposed? That motion does not pass. I'll be looking for another motion for the municipal budget on item number 60. I think what we have is the proposed language. And as it says on here, draft motions are based on what was set for the public hearing. Councilors may make any motion of their choosing. But what we have for draft language is on the second page of our agenda. If anyone would like to make a motion?
Should we go right here on this one? The first page, right here?
Move. It's on the second page on my printout. But it may just be the font size.
Okay, I'll do it. I will move, order the Capes of Town Council, having held a public hearing on Monday, May 9, 2016, does hereby adopt the municipal budget for fiscal year 2017, and hereby makes the following gross appropriations for each listed department. Should I read them through these?
I was going to say, is contained and detailed in the packet, is that...
Contained and detailed in the packet.
Just as listed.
With a total municipal dollar, is this 12,552,658? 688, did I get that correct?
Do I have a second on that motion? Thank you, Jamie. Discussion on that number and on that motion. Anyone? Anyone want to comment any further on item number 60? Again, I will just say, I think we went through a very thorough deliberative process on the budget this year. I've done 25 years of business-related budgeting. I think this was a very thorough process. I'm very happy with where we ended up in terms of process this year. I think we spent a huge amount of time, went through line item by line item. I'm proud of where we have ended up. And as always, I think we can expect that our town manager and his staff will do their best to stay within or below the numbers that we've budgeted. Anyone else have anything to say? No? All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Thank you. That passes for two. We will move on to item number 61. And again, I'll ask if the Finance Chair, Kathy Ray, could make that motion, introduce the item and make the motion.
Thank you. I move that the town of Cape Elizabeth appropriate a total school budget which is a 1% reduction of the proposed budget of $24,287,545.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Jessica. Discussion? Yes, Kathy?
I'd like to indicate why I've asked for that.
Please do.
Currently, I can't support the current school budget as it stands. I asked for a 1% decrease in both the school and town budgets, but did not get a majority of councilors to support this. I'll list my reasons in no particular order. I don't believe we can continue to have budget increases above the rate of inflation. The current CPIU is 0.9%. The school budget tax rate increase is 3.9% with an expenditure increase of 1.97%. 98% of revenue in the town comes from residential property taxpayers with 2% coming from commercial taxpayers. I feel this creates a burden on the residents. The school board's class size policy was changed in November of 2015 to allow for smaller class sizes. I apologize that a lot of this is numbers, so I'll try not to go too fast. Our student population has gone from 1,740 students in 2001 to a projected 1,600 students in 2017. The corresponding budgets have gone from $13,617,956 in 2001 to a proposed $24,287,545,000 in 2017. This is an increase of $10,669,589. That's over a 15-year period. In 2012 and 2013, there were 121.15 regular teachers for 674 students. The proposed budget has a 121.2 regular teachers for 1,600 students. This clearly indicates to me that class size has decreased. The funding formula from the state has decreased money to Cape Elizabeth for the coming years. Although I don't agree with all the calculations, and I was on the school board when that all came about, the formula, one reason for the decrease is the drop in student population. A little bit of what Jessica said, the median home in Cape Elizabeth of 314,000 would see a property tax increase of $144.44 with the proposed budget. I'm concerned about folks on fixed incomes absorbing that cost. And as Jessica mentioned, social security has not gone, has not increased in many years. We also have, now have a summer school program for 75 students, which is included in the proposed budget. The cost of this, I believe, is $21,340. I think this cost should be borne by the parents of summer school students and not the taxpayers. I could say a few more things, but I will leave it at that. So that's why I am supporting the motion that I made.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments? Yes, Jessica?
Yep. I'm supporting a 1% decrease for the school budget as well as the municipal budget. And I, I came to that conclusion after our budget workshop and listening to Councilor Ray and then going over numbers and the history. And I know that this year was particularly difficult because of a big drop in the number from the state. And I think the school board worked very hard to present a much leaner budget and in the face of that as well. So I certainly commend, commend them for that. But again, when you look at the trend, I mean, what, about 120, I can't see what you're number, 120 students down? And significant increases into the millions over these years, I still think this is a trend that needs to slow down. And with respect to what the manager said about community services going back and forth, you know, and teasing that out, the bottom line is, that tax bill is what goes to the residents. The overall tax bill is what goes to them. Whatever we vote on, they have to pay or ultimately lose their homes. I mean, so they don't have any choice. And so again, I say, it is fiscally prudent to slow this train down. And so that's why I support a 1% decrease. We do have excellent schools. We have excellent town services. But, you know, having also been in business, there are always more efficiencies. And it is all, to me, it's also the, the image of constant increases. And I do think it's worth looking at that and slowing them down. And I guess that's all I have to say. But I think that that kind of a million-dollar increase over time is pretty tough, again, in the face of well over 100-student decline in enrollment.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to say anything on the council? Yes?
Yeah, say something. This is a tough one because I agree on many of the points that the, the budget has increased at that rate. But I'm not sure we can get off that train, to be honest. But I'm not sure we can get off that train, to be honest, because I think if you look at, we looked at what benefits and salaries were, 83% of this budget. That leaves, it leaves 80% of wiggle room, which is, even if you were to crush that, there's just not a lot there. I think we, this town values educating our children and puts it as a top priority. And while I completely agree with you and sympathize with people who are aging and having trouble paying their taxes, I think it's, it's just, it's the will of the people to make sure that we have one of the best school systems and we are competitive with our kids. And again, that number of salaries is just something that is going to go up, especially as we retain teachers and we, you know, have that. That would be one. The second thing would be, I think as we move forward and have conversations about other potential revenue streams, which would help in this community, I would hope that our community would think about that, to help ease this tax burden, to pull it a little bit off of property taxes. That would be just a side comment in this. So I will not be supporting the number, Cathy, that you've proposed, but I sympathize with your rationale. I just, I feel that the work that's been done by the school board, and it has been thoughtful work, and we, they are elected to go through and sift through and make sure that they are funding the priorities for our children. So I'm going to support, if we get there, their, I prefer to support their budget as presented.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jamie?
Yeah, I concur with what Patty said. I think our biggest problem here is this gigantic part of the school budget, 82%. It's a negotiated, you know, collectively bargained portion of their budget. And unfortunately, that, that really, you know, backs you into a corner in terms of what ability there is to get leaner, get more efficient, and as a result of that, you know, save, save on the overall budget. I think the school board has done a good job this year of, like in the municipal budget, presenting, you know, what they feel and I agree with is a responsible set of expenses. The, the planning process for developing the school budget is a very difficult one, given the moving targets of the multiple variables that, you know, we don't have to reconcile on the municipal budget side as often. I think, again, I'll reiterate what I said on the municipal budget. I think as we went through in detail, there were not things that I saw within the, the school portion of the budget that represented extravagance or, you know, luxuries, if you will, but rather a responsible budget designed to meet the mission of the school department as well as, you know, the goals and objectives that we have for, for teaching our kids in town. So for that reason, I, I support the budget as presented, the full budget as presented.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? Jessica?
I'd like to say again that I, as I said a few minutes ago, I certainly do appreciate the efforts on the part of the school department, and it was tough here, given the cuts from the state. But I would like to, to point out to my fellow counselors that we represent all the citizens of Cape Elizabeth, not just the school parents. We all want excellent schools. We have excellent schools and excellent public services. But, you know, I certainly am very concerned for those seniors and young families struggling that we perhaps work harder to slow the train of tax increases down. And that's why I'm sticking to my 1% request.
Thank you. Yes, Sarah?
I don't think that, I feel when I support the school board budget that I am, I do have all the citizens in mind, very much so, because I think strong schools are the single biggest reason that our property taxes are as high, I'm sorry, our property values are as high as they are. They maintain, maintain their value. Actually, they've gone up enormously lately. Every person I talk to who doesn't live in Cape wants to live in Cape. Every person who I talk to who has moved here, moved here primarily for the schools and secondarily for the open land and space. And property taxes, you know, can be difficult, but people should take heart because their home values have only benefited from that. And there's no way to cut and do anything, you know, if we start not paying our teachers' salary increases, you stop attracting and retaining the best teachers. That's just a fact. So in no way do I feel that supporting the school board budget is only representing the families with children in the schools at all. So I think, I think supporting strong schools and budgets that the school board responsibly believes they need is, is a vote for all members of our community.
Cathy?
I wanted to address something that Jamie said with reference to the 82% salaries. And although the salaries are a part of negotiated contract, it's about the numbers of employees. The numbers are not negotiated. Those are at the school boards or the school departments within their purview of changing them. And the negotiated contracts are hard. I mean, I was on the school board for eight years, and I did a bunch of those negotiated contracts, and it's a very difficult thing to do. And it's, I do support the teachers. What I, when I looked at the numbers, I think I maybe go to what Jessica was saying. She was talking about slowing the train down. If you, the numbers don't lie. And if you look at the numbers specifically, one of the things that was my biggest concern was class size. If you have 121 regular teachers teaching 1,740 students, I think it was, and then you have 121 teachers teaching 1,600, you've got smaller class sizes. Now, I know, when I was on the school board, I told, we talked a lot about class size, and I know that teachers, parents would prefer smaller classes. If you're a parent, you'd prefer your child in a smaller class. If you're a teacher, you'd prefer to teach smaller classes. But where's the cutoff? You know, where is the appropriate number? I don't know, ever, ever hearing what the appropriate number was. I think there's, you know, suggested ranges and so forth. But, you know, I, I came to my conclusions looking at, specifically at the numbers. I didn't come to my conclusions based on, I didn't think the school board did a good job, or I didn't think the superintendent and their staff did a good job, or any of those things. I'm not questioning their devotion to, to the job any more than I question the counselor's devotion to their job. I mean, we all get paid the big bucks, right? This is a volunteer opportunity, and I think we all do our very best to try to support the town. But I, I look at these numbers, and I'm a little overwhelmed by thinking, I think as Jessica said, wow, can we slow this down a little bit? I mean, I think about a mother, a single mother trying to put braces on her kids, her kids' teeth of, I think they were about 5,800 when my daughter had them. Those are, those, I don't want them, those folks to be making choices. You know, do I continue to send my child to Cape Elizabeth schools, which I want to do? I mean, they were a good school when I went here. I graduated in 77. My husband graduated in 76. My daughter graduated in 2010. I'm, I'm committed to the town, and I want to support it as much as possible. But I also think that we have to keep everybody in mind, and do I think if we gave them more money, they'd do a terrific job? Yes. Do I think if we give them less money, they're going to do any less of a job? No, I don't. I think they will still do a terrific job. I think we all live within a budget, and I think that we sometimes have to make choices about what we can and can't afford. You know, maybe not what we want, but what we need. So that's, I just wanted to address that because it's, it's not a given that negotiated contracts keep the numbers up. It keeps the, it keeps the certain salary range and so forth. And when I did one of the negotiations, I think they were kind of surprised that I supported a larger salary increase for them. But I am concerned about class size and the other things I just mentioned. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jamie?
Cathy, I don't think any of us are questioning your commitment to the town by any means or, or, you know, experience as an alum of the Cape schools and a parent of them. I think, I think the numbers can be a little bit misleading on the reduction in the overall number of students and the enrollment. And as I, you know, what, what I saw as we went through the process of reviewing all this was that when taken over a more longitudinal view like that, there is certainly, you know, cause for, red flag or cause for alarm, whatever you want to say, about the comparison between the enrollment and the number of teachers. But what we saw on a year-over-year basis was that that's a more sort of normalized rate, if you will, and that it also doesn't necessarily correlate to, well, with X number of students, you know, X number reduced enrollment, then you, you need exactly this number fewer teachers. That all aside, I think what the bigger driver, though, of this rate over that longitudinal view is sort of the, what I'd say is a more exponential rate of increase in the salaries and more specifically in the benefits that's driving that, that increase in, in the budget here, and not the fact that there may be, you know, however many teachers, more than you feel is necessary for the appropriate enrollment. I think it's, I think it's more the amount of the salary, the, the rate at which the benefits are increasing, that, like in any other business in, in the private sector, where, you know, companies are having to reduce the amount of, you know, their contribution to their employees' health insurance and things like that, because they, you know, the costs are just skyrocketing to a point that, you know, that's, that's what I feel is the real driver here. And, and yes, even though it's a collectively bargained contract, you can reduce the actual number of people, I don't think that's as big a contributor to this, this runaway train as is the, you know, marketplace economics of what's driving salary and benefits.
Yes, Sarah?
I think we should move the vote. I don't think, I mean, these are gigantic topics. We could spend many, many days talking about every one of them, whether it's class, bigger class sizes, what research shows and so forth. We have a very long agenda in front of us for a workshop, and I don't, I think, I feel relatively confident that more conversation is not going to yield a change in anyone's mind, so I'd like to suggest that we vote.
Thank you. Sarah, anyone else who wants to say anything before we do that? No? I will. I will just say that I think every school board member and every town council member is exceptionally concerned, aware of and concerned about budgets and about the corresponding effect on taxes in town. I think we had a very different process this year than we had last year, and I think that we also had a very different set of numbers that we were working with this year than we had last year. And because of that, I am going to vote against the proposal on the table right now, the motion on the table right now. And I'm with you, Sarah. We will move the vote at this point and look for a vote. All of those in favor of Cathy's motion? And again, read it to us.
Certainly. It's to reduce this proposed school budget 1% for a total budget of $24,44,669.60.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? That motion does not pass. I need another motion for item number 61 on the school budget approval. Is there someone who will make a motion? Yes?
I'll give it a shot. I move that the town of Cape Elizabeth approve a school budget of $24,287,545,000.
And all the other language?
Oh, and all the other language, which would be?
As presented.
As presented. All the other language as presented. Thank you.
Yeah, the minutes will reflect it.
Okay, thank you.
We have it in our packets. Do I have a second for that motion? Thank you, Sarah. Discussion on this motion. No? All in favor of this motion? Opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. We will move on to item number 62, the approval of the Cumberland County assessment. And Cathy, could I look to you one more time?
Yes, I move that the Cape Elizabeth Town Council, having held a public hearing on Monday, May 9, 2016, does hereby approve for inclusion in the fiscal year 2017 budget, the assessment from Cumberland County for 2016 amounting to $1,171,612.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion on that item? Yes?
I'd like to go on record as stating that I think that the Cumberland County assessments are getting, becoming exorbitant, and I, for one, plan to be looking into that. Not that I know if I can do, we can do anything about it, but it's getting very high.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will agree with Jessica Sullivan on that. Ask the town manager if he could just pass that along to the folks at the Cumberland County.
I'd be happy to. And, you know, if you look at the county assessment, it's running roughly three times the increase that the municipal and school budgets are in Cape Elizabeth from percentage viewpoint. They keep saying, well, it's a small part of the budget. Well, it is small, but it's becoming a bigger and bigger piece of it all the time. And I think if you look at the numbers of the percentage increases in the tax rate this year, you know, there's the homestead exemption, which goes back to the taxpayers anyway, but the next, the next biggest really significant one is the county tax. It's up 5.6%.
Wow, okay.
So we'll communicate it.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion? Any opposed?
I oppose it.
Thank you.
It's too high.
That motion passes. We'll move on to item number 63, the approval of the local homestead exemption funds. Could I ask the Finance Chair again to make this motion?
I move that the Cape Elizabeth Town Council, having held a public hearing on Monday, May 9, 2016, does hereby approve for inclusion in the fiscal year 2017 budget, the amount of $302,000 for the local share of homestead exemptions.
I think it's 312,000.
What did I, I'm sorry, 312,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Patty, thank you. Discussion? No? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. We will move on to number 64, property tax levy limit. Cathy?
I move that the Cape Elizabeth Town Council, in accordance with Title 30A MRSA Section 5721-A, the town of Cape Elizabeth hereby increases the property tax levy limit from municipal services to, to the...
Take out the...
Take out the word "the."
To $7,102,688.
Thank you. Sarah, second? Thank you, Sarah. Discussion on that? Any comments, questions? No? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That passes. We will move on to item number 65, proposed 2017 general fund budget summary motion. Cathy, are you ready for that one?
I'm going to let somebody else make that motion.
Had enough of you, and it's a long one.
Yes, I'm sure you've had enough.
Does someone else who would like to make that motion?
Maybe the Sarah.
You want me to make that?
Sure. I move. Read the whole thing.
Yeah, I move that we, having held a public hearing on May 9, 2016, we hereby adopt the general fund budget for the fiscal year 2017 with gross expenditures of $37,899,281 and gross revenues of $8,383,270.
Can you speak a little louder?
And with the amount of $29,516.11 to be raised from taxation and to fix Monday, October 3, 2016, and Monday, April 3, 2017, as it dates upon each of which one-half of such tax is due and payable with interest to accrue upon taxes due and unpaid after each such date at the rate of 7% per annum. In accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506, the tax collector and town treasurer are authorized to accept prepayment or decline prepayment of taxes not yet committed or prior to any due date and pay no interest thereon. In accordance with 36 MRSA Section 506-A, the taxpayer who pays an amount accepted by the tax collector and town treasurer in excess of the finally assessed shall be repaid the amount of overpayment plus interest from the date of overpayment at the minimum annual rate per annum set by the state of Maine.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Patty, discussion or questions? Anyone? Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to this just briefly. I know you have another workshop. First, I want to thank the council for... First, I want to thank the council for their support of the budgets. And, but I also even more so want to thank you for the, the discussion this evening. You know, we, we had a department head meeting on May 9. And we also had a personnel advisory committee, which is made up of representatives and non-department heads from every department. And that includes a representative of the Teamsters in the room, a representative of the police union, as well as from the other departments. And at both of those meetings, I said to them that the municipal budget increases that we're seeing are not sustainable. We had, we had an increase last year is because of the new library construction of over 4%. This year, while the tax rate for municipal services is up over two, is just up 2.4%, spending is up 3.8%. You, and when you have a cost of living adjustment, these exact words I said that morning, of .09%, CPI, Consumer Price Index, you can't be increasing your spending by 4%. That just is not sustainable. And, you know, I, no department heads disagreed. None of the other folks disagreed. I, maybe they were a little taken aback. But one example I cited was that when the council did my evaluation this year and determined my pay, one of, what they did was, they did not give me a cost of living increase. And if you look at this budget, there's no cost of living increase for the town manager. Instead, there was a one-time bonus, which was equivalent to what an increase would have been. But by doing that, instead of just adding to the base, adding to the base, and adding to the base, it should slow things down in the longer term. And I use that in example of things that we have to do. So, you know, I heard the comments this evening. I agree with them in principle, although, you know, but I, but I agree with everyone. I think it was late. I, you know, I spoke, I'm not going to repeat what I said. But I will pledge this. When I put together, working with the department heads, municipal budget for next year, you know, instead of, you know, a tax rate increase of 2.4%, I can, you know, unless we get some shock, it'll be less than half that next year. And similarly, our expenditure increase, my goal will be less than half of what it is this year. And that's even recognizing that for the projects I mentioned, we've only funded the principal in this budget. We still need to fund the interest in next year's budget. But our goal will be to, you know, at the staff level, to, for the municipal budget to increase, to decrease the levels this year by less than half of what they were this year, which is actually more than the 1% that some of the councils were talking about. But I think if we know we're heading in that direction, we know that's the focus. We know it is a year out that that's the focus. Working with the council at revenues and other things, you know, it's, it's very attainable, very doable. You know, we've got a, we're not going to have big projects next year. But, you know, we just, we can't keep increasing taxes by this amount. I think everyone understands that. And I think, you know, obviously needs to be continued dialogue. I'm only speaking of municipal budget. But, you know, for, including the county, as was mentioned, there needs to be continued dialogue on generally where we're going with this. That's my comment on whatever item number this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Kathy?
Just a note that I'll be voting against this motion because it holds the higher numbers that I voted against earlier. Not because I don't want to fix the Monday, October 3, and Monday, April 3 as the dates when taxes are due.
Thank you.
In full.
Anyone else? Yes, that's
Just echo councillor's comments.
Anyone else? No?
Just one other quick thing. I was just at an ECO Maine meeting representing this council. And we went into executive session, we were discussing the, the general manager's salary. And we had a good discussion, I can't talk about what happened. You know, he does a great job, does a wonderful job. We came out of the Texas, we said all that. And then we had a vote to increase his pay. I voted against it. Because they were increasing his pay by 4%. And even though he does a great, great job, wonderful job, I said, I wanted to be recorded as a no vote. Because that, we can't keep increasing pay, those levels, and pay for it. And, you know, and I said, I wanted to be recorded as a no vote. And I told, and I had a discussion with him afterward. It's not personal, it's not, it's just somewhere, we need to get control of all this. And, you know, so it's, it's not only, but we need to do it in the other arenas in which we act to. Be it at the negotiating table with the unions, be it whatever form we're in to, to make sure that there isn't the, the push over and over and over for more money, more money, more money. I'll get off my soapbox.
There will always be that push, of course, but I understand the point you're making. Okay. Anybody else? No? All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Thank you. That passes. Next up, I think we are done with all of the agenda items. And we will move on to citizen opportunity for discussion of items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda? No? Seeing none, we will move on. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to mention to the public that we are moving into a workshop after this regular meeting to review Paper Street's report and the status of council goals for the year. So with that, would I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion? Yes?
Yes, actually, not about adjournment, but another issue.
Okay.
It seemed, to my understanding, our, our budget process with the school board was essentially the same as last year. I mean, we had the workshop, I, I mean, it was the same process.
I seem to remember that we started off with at least one earlier meeting this year than we had last year. And we had a meeting of the school superintendent, the town manager, the school board chair, and I met in January to kick off that process and talk through what the expectations would be this year. And then we started in January, as I remember, with a presentation with the overview of kind of the big budget drivers. And I don't think we had that conversation last year, and certainly not at the level of detail that we had it this year. So I think we had a little bit more discussion and a little bit more of a presentation upfront. So we were not as surprised by the time the school budget actually came to the council as we were last year. And as you remember, last year, we had some big budget drivers in the opposite direction last year that we didn't have this year.
Well, okay. So there were, so there were a couple of quasi-administrative meetings that took place that did not take place last year with the chairman or something?
Yeah. The school board chair and the council chair met in January. And then we had a, a full meeting here in January where we had the big budget driver discussion. We didn't have that last year either.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Move to adjourn? All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? No? We are adjourned. We will